Have a good meeting, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks Dave.
Thanks Dave.
I think we're good to go, Mike.
Still showing 59. Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for the Town of Rockland Tuesday, September 15, 2020. Please direct your attention to selectmen Larry Ryan for the Pledge of Allegiance. Larry?
Evening, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry.
You're welcome.
Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion. As a recently recorded meeting and community events, please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. First on the agenda, community announcements. Doug?
Thanks, Mike. I'd like to start with the healthcare worker of the week. I'm gonna share my screen. So you can all see that. So our healthcare worker of the week is Donna Gilfoi, and I'd like to read what she wrote for us. She said, "I've been a registered nurse for 12 years. I work at Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston. I'm a staff nurse and work on the neuroscience unit. I've been in my current position for eight years. I live in Rockland with my husband and our three sons. We're proud to be part of this small town with a big heart. Thank you." So that's, we appreciate all the work that she does for the town and the community, and it's always enjoyable to do this each week. The next thing I wanted to mention is the sort of long community announcement that's printed on the agenda. This is something that we've spoken about in the past, which relates to our upcoming special town meeting on November 16th. So for the board to consider possibly reducing the quorum like you did for our most recent annual town meeting in June, the state law which authorizes this temporarily has some very strict public notice requirements before you can vote it at a selectmen's meeting. It has to be publicly noticed with a copy of the law a certain number of days before the meeting. So that was the purpose of having that printed on this posted agenda and the purpose of me talking about it now. So everybody knows that your next regular meeting, which will be October 6th, the town moderator will be invited to participate in the meeting and then you guys can deliberate and possibly vote to reduce the quorum at the special town meeting. And since we're still in the middle of the pandemic, I think that would be a very prudent thing to do. Again, reducing the quorum doesn't reduce the maximum occupancy, doesn't prohibit anybody from coming. Everybody can still attend, but we won't have to worry about struggling to get a quorum in case fewer people turn out because of the pandemic. And that's, oh, I'm sorry, just still letting people know about the zoning board of appeal vacancies. We did receive a few applications, and I think, Mike, when we talked last time, the board was gonna possibly come back with some questions that you guys would ask at your next meeting on October 6th where you would make those appointments. We still do have a couple of Board of Library trustees vacancies. And again, letters of interest should be sent to Pat Foley at the library. And then lastly, for announcements, I wanted to highlight that as the board previously authorized, we will be auctioning off the property at 320 Conference Street, which the town took by tax title. That's a high-profile property. I think everybody watching this meeting probably knows all about it. I put on a tentative auction date, and I want to stress that it's tentative because we're still working on finalizing some of the legal notices, so it may be a little bit later than November 5th. But we're tentatively looking at November 5th for that. We have a professional auctioneer, and once that date is set in stone and firm, there's gonna be extensive advertising. The auctioneer will reach out to all the abutters and will do a lot more advertising. So this is just a heads up to the community that that's coming. And that's all I have for announcements.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda is open session minutes of September 1st, 2020. I have a motion.
A motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Ms. Nyman?
I have to abstain. I was absent from the meeting.
Fair enough. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. Next on the agenda, new business. Holiday stroll update. Pam Murphy, Dan Biggins. Welcome, guys. No, I'm mute.
That's Marty. Turn off your mute. You?
There you go.
Jim, and the internet connection's a little tough up here at the North Pole sometimes.
Hi, thanks for having us. We're, as you might guess, we're here with some sad news. We couldn't wait any longer because of everybody that's involved in the whole process. We're gonna have to call the holiday stroll. So it's not gonna happen this year. You can't have parades and festivals in the street. With all the regulations, it just can't happen. So we'll be amelistic and sorry. Now, Daniel's free.
So Pam and I and Kathy Stewart over the past several years have been really honored to be emissaries for Rockland for Santa's Elvish Senate. And the Elvish Senate has been working with Governor Baker and state and local officials on talking about this year's stroll as it is always high on Santa's priority list. However, and the first priority for Santa and everyone up at the North Pole is to make sure everyone is safe, particularly our kids in Rockland. And being that the holiday stroll is an event that draws hundreds and thousands every single year, up and down the streets of Rockland and Rockland's businesses, Rockland volunteers, Rockland families, Rockland businesses, the North Pole, Santa and his Elvish Senate decided there's no way they responsibly be able to do this this year. So we're gonna be postponing the stroll as Rockland is traditionally known to know it this year. But Santa has asked Ms. Murphy and I to express to the children of Rockland to let them know that Santa's really making it a priority to make some way to say hello to the kids of Rockland this year and to make sure that the children of Rockland have some way to get their wishes up to the North Pole to make sure Santa can get, you know, appropriate gifts to the kids that want them, all the good kids of Rockland. So Santa's asked to let us, has to let us, ask the kids to, even though we're not having our normal stroll, to continue being good kids, continue listening to your parents, you know, during stroll this year, during school rolling out's a little different. So make sure you're going out and doing your homework and listening to your parents in front of those, in front of the remote learning. So we're gonna look forward to getting back to a normal traditional stroll in 2021. But right now, stay tuned because we're looking forward to finding a way that Santa can say hello to kids sometime before Christmas begins. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the Board of Selectmen, to everybody in Rockland for being understanding of this decision. It's not one that we wanted to make. The stroll is, we think, one of our favorite days of the year in Rockland. As being involved in planning the stroll, one of our favorite things to do every year. So we regret very much this announcement, but thank you for understanding, and we'll look forward to making 2021 stroll bigger and better than ever.
Thank you, guys. I'll open it up now to questions or comments from the other members of the board. Ms. Nyman?
I don't have any questions, but I know this decision probably didn't come lightly from you guys, but I think it's the most responsible thing that you can do at this point in time. I want to thank you for all you've done for the Rockland Stroll over the past several years, and I know 2021 will be bigger and better. So thank you, guys.
Mr. Ryan?
I can say it's thanks to you guys. I know we spoke earlier in the week and talked about whether or not we should have a stroll. And with the current everything that's going on, it would be crazy to try to do it. It's tough to deny what the government wants us to do, so without causing the big fuckers. So it's the best thing that we can do. It's too bad, but next year, we're gonna raise hell and the streets of Rockland will be wide open.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, I just have, I just have one question, and I want to echo my thoughts, you know, to Dan and Pam. Have you heard anything from Santa yet about like whether and how this will affect everything on December 25th? Like, have you heard how the presence and the delivery of presents will be affected? Or will everything be the same this year? Oh, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mullen. That's an important question. Santa and I, I'm sorry I didn't mention that. Santa did also want me to express that the North Pole, if you're familiar with the idea of what the NBA just did with the bubble, you know, creating a bubble on the NBA playoffs, they've done a similar thing with the North Pole. So there's-
Yeah, I don't follow the NBA, though. Can you explain it?
Unlike here in the United States, there's daily and readily available COVID testing there. So they're pumping out of toys. The industrial complex of the North Pole remains intact. So Santa does not anticipate any delays in delivery this year. And he did also let me know that, you know, the kids of Rockland have been really great. So he's planning on a really generous Christmas this year.
Thank you. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen, always with the tough questions. Mr. Penny?
Well, that's interesting to follow up on. So I just want to say thank you to Pam, to Kathy, to Dan, and everyone else involved. It is an unfortunate circumstance of the world we live in today that this cannot go on. So to everyone out there, you know, we will, we will be back a year from now, and as Ms. Nyman said, it will be bigger and better than ever. So thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Penny.
Pam, Dan, you know, great job every year. Kathy as well. Obviously, this is another casualty of this pandemic. You know, I was curious, you know, I think Pam, you and I have talked a little bit about some different ideas. Is there a email address or a website or Facebook page where people can go to maybe submit some ideas or anything for next year's stroll or anything for this year? Anything that they can try to help out or make donations or stuff like that to some of the kids in town?
Yeah, we have, we have one for Rockland friends, but we're gonna open up the holiday stroll 2020. So we'll get that word out as soon as we open that.
Yeah, it's great to get some ideas for ways, you know, Santa's open to them too, and, you know, saying, I know they've been talking about it. There's already some ideas that have been banged around a little bit of ways that Santa can, in a very safe and appropriate way, you know, say hello to Rockland kids and make sure that those Christmas lists get delivered on time.
Yeah, of course. I mean, he's a great guy, so I'm sure he'd be open to anything, anything that you guys suggested or anything that the board, you know, allowed him to do, I guess.
We'll make sure that, we'll make sure the sleigh arrives on time.
That sounds great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your help and all your hard work throughout the year. As always, thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
All right, next on the agenda, appointments. Southfield redevelopment authority board of directors, David Rubin.
Maybe I'll just say real quick, Mike, that, you know, this is a joint appointment with the Town of Waymouth, and they support Mr. Rubin. He's, this is a reappointment. He's been in that role for a while. I've got to know him a little bit at a few meetings. I appreciated all the interactions I've had with him, and I know Tom Henderson, the chairman, is fully in support as well, and he's here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, so it's not often, it's not every day that we have somebody from the Southfield redevelopment authority board here. So I'll open it up to questions or comments from the board before we go on the appointment. Ms. Nyman?
I don't have any questions right now. I read the correspondence, and it looks like our friends in Waymouth are in full support of David being appointed, so I would be in support as well.
Okay, Mr. Ryan? Larry?
Dave, we put you through the wringer the last time. We don't need to do it again. Thanks for the job you're doing, and you got my support.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Mullen?
Yeah, I absolutely concur with Mr. Ryan. I remember the wringer, David, and I apologize for that. But, you know, over these, over these last few years, three years or so, like I've seen how you have worked with our representatives, with Tom and Kelly, and the synergy you have with everyone on the entire board. And I wholeheartedly support your reappointment, and I thank you for all the work you, you know, and the entire SIA, haven't had it easy either. You've been through a lot, and, you know, like, and we appreciate all your work and effort. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Yeah, David, I do not have any questions. It does appear that with this new board, with you on it, the way it's going, that there have been some progress, which is a positive thing. So, you know, keep up the good work, and if there's anything that we can do as a board to help in the process, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, sir. Dave, I'll agree with Larry Ryan and Mike Mullen. You know, we put you through a pretty decent screening the last time around to be where you are, and you did a really nice job for us as our representative. So with that, I'll open up, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I will make that motion that we reappoint David Rubin to the board of directors at the airbase.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
And Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. A lot easier this time, Dave. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hopefully, the next three years brings a lot better news than the last 20. So I appreciate this support. Thank you. Thank you.
Keep plugging there, pal.
Yeah. That's all we can do.
That's it.
All right, next on the agenda is another appointment. This is for the Cultural Arts Council. Michelle Finn?
I do believe she is on the Zoom call. It's a three-year term, and I haven't had the pleasure of meeting her. But again, we did ask her to be here in case you had an-
Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Finn? Ms. Nyman?
I do not have any questions.
Mr. Ryan?
Nope. Glad to have her, and once we get to her, we're not gonna let you go.
Mr. Mullen?
Well, yeah, like, I agree, like, we, oh, you know, like, we already have a really good understanding of Ms. Finn's work. I can work, you know, what she has done with our farmers markets and all her involvement. So again, I just want to thank her for wanting to be involved, helping us really shape the direction we're heading, and I wholeheartedly support it as well.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny?
Yeah, I agree. So, you know, it's great to see people stepping up, volunteering, adding to what they're taking on, trying to make the community better. So I really appreciate her stepping up, and hopefully we'll welcome aboard in a second.
Okay, and with that, I'll open it up. I want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, that we appoint Ms. Michelle Finn to the cultural council.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
And myself. Michelle, this is the animus. Again, thanks for stepping up, and now we got you. Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, Doug, other new business? Not reasonably anticipated? Anything to add?
I have none.
Okay. Next on the agenda, number five, old business. 11-16, 2020, special town meeting update. Doug?
Sure, and just before I start, because Michelle hopped on a little bit later. Michelle, please feel free to leave the meeting. You won't be rude or hurting our feelings, so you are free to leave if you want. But yeah, just as a reminder, you know, for the public, we are gonna have a special town meeting. The board voted that at its previous meeting. We'll make sure that we have the warrant publicly available at least two weeks ahead of time, which is November 2nd, and probably be available even a little bit before that. Again, it'll be, we're planning on doing it indoors, the same way we did before, in the auditorium with overflow rooms if necessary, and we'll do all the same precautions for COVID as we did last time with face masks and a temperature station available by the fire department, hand sanitizer, et cetera. And we'll also have the certain town staff will be volunteering to be ushers again, as we did the last time. The health agent coordinated that, and I think that was a really effective way to do it because if you just went simply and just made everybody be six or more feet apart, you wouldn't get as many people in. But if you're coming with your spouse or other people in your family, there's no reason why you can't sit together. So we were able to group people together that way and have a more efficient use of space. So we're planning on that. I'm anticipating it's gonna be a pretty short warrant. You know, there'll be an article to increase spending for the school budget, an article to increase spending on the town side. There might be another article or two for some small things like paying bills from prior fiscal years, you know, things like that. But nothing major. I haven't heard of any other significant articles yet. So should be, should be a pretty quick one. I won't get into details on the budget yet because that'll be the next agenda item that we'll talk about. And obviously, at the next board meeting, as I said earlier, that's when you guys can decide if you want to lower the quorum or not. And that's really all I have for the town meeting update, unless you had any questions.
I'm seeing a lot of head shaking, so I'll take that as no questions. Okay. Next is revised FY21 budget update. Doug?
Great. I'm going to share my screen again. Let me do that right now. I'll make this a little bigger. Hopefully, you can all see that. So what's, just I can't stress enough how remarkable this year has been for all of us working in town hall. The pace of change, the amount of change and the pace of change is just staggering. So I put together something that I thought was pretty good in your packet just the other day, and I already have new information, and it's already a little bit out of date. So I'm gonna try to work off of this document and explain a little bit what some of the updates are, and it's, I just want you to know, we're doing our best to adapt to all this new information. Biz and I are aligned in that, you know, we like to, you know, tackle a problem, get it right, button it up, present it to you, get a vote, and move on. And it's just hard when there's so much new information that's coming at us so quick. But just to recap, you know, again, we got good news from the state. And, you know, we looked at that 70-30 split, and we all agreed to set 10% aside just in case our assessments came back higher, you know, just to be conservative. So we came to a school number of 638,000. We agreed to round it up to 650 to help them out, and we would take the rest, which was a little under $262,000. And then we previously talked about the ways that we would, on the town side, restore some of our cuts. And again, to highlight, we had originally, in our budget in June, we cut $654,000 from the town side. And as I showed on that page previously, you know, we could restore just a little bit under 262,000. And that's what this shows here, all the different departments with restorations of cuts that would total that exact number, the 261,000. And I've also shared with you previously, and I'm not gonna go through it all right now, but, you know, page by page, you know, department by department, exactly where each of these numbers come from. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have on that, but the the big news is, since I just put this together, we got excellent news from the state that our assessments, not only did they not come up higher, they actually came in lower. So we actually have a little bit more money. So going back to this earlier, can you see the spreadsheet on the screen right now?
Yes.
So going back again, this first column here was what I was showing you earlier with the original million dollars estate aid, setting aside 10%, rounding up the schools to 650, that got us to our number. But with the new, the new assessments that came in that are actually lower, we're updating our numbers. So we no longer have a need to set aside 10% for the assessments since we got the actuals in. So that gives us more money there. We don't have to set that 10% aside. And then in addition, we have what looks like $95,000 of savings and lower assessments that when we do the 70-30 split gets proportioned between the town and the school. So the bottom line is, on the, on the school side, they are now going to get, instead of that 650,000 that we talked about, they're gonna get $775,816. And on the town side, instead of the just under $262,000, we have available $332,000 to restore cuts. So again, that would be 332,000 to restore out of the 654,000 or so that we actually cut. So it's great news, but again, it just, it just changes the numbers that we were working with. So going back to this document here, I think maybe the simplest way to do it, I'm not gonna flip through all these pages because I think it would just be too much on the screen, and I did send this to you ahead of time, so hopefully you had a chance to look at it. But maybe what I can explain is what my thoughts are for, in addition to this, how I think we would, how I would recommend using the additional funds that we now have available from the state assessments. And I should also say one more thing before I get into that, which is, as I mentioned earlier, we got excellent news from the state that we received a 911 grant that is gonna fully cover our regional dispatch costs for this year, and it's gonna save us $309,000. So in meeting with our internal financial team, we want to stay on the conservative route. So I'm not recommending at this special town meeting in November to spend that yet. I want to wait, and I want to look and see how all of our other revenues come in. And if, you know, once we get to May, when we'll hopefully have our normal annual special town meeting, if we have needs, then we could certainly look at re-appropriating some of those funds at that time. But for now, I recommend keeping that whole 309,000 off the table. The only thing that we might want to consider a use of a portion of that 309,000 would be if we want to look at some potential response time analyses for the fire department. You know, we previously looked at a new fire station with some of the other development that might be coming down the pike in other parts of town. Maybe instead of one big station, we should look at two smaller stations so to kind of inform that analysis response. There's firms that do response time analyses, and they can help literally map it out visually so we can kind of see where we get the biggest bang for our buck. That might be one thing for relatively short money that we might want to look at doing. So I'll just plant that bug in your head, but I'm not prepared to formally recommend that now. So again, I have in this spreadsheet, which you've already seen, you know, again, all the pages, all the areas that I'm looking to restore. So the additional restorations would essentially be all of the other cuts that we made that were not restored, except for some that I'm gonna highlight now. I figured that would be the simplest. So some of the items that we would not restore with these additional funds would be my salary increase, the assessing department, we had a cut on the revaluation services. We will be able to live without that amount, so we don't need to restore the revow cut in the assessing department. For now, I don't think we would need to restore the clerical position, the amount that we cut in the tax collector's office. That's something that we may likely need in the future. Once we get out of COVID and foot traffic really increases, maybe FY22, we'd need it. But seeing the way things are going now in FY21, we don't think we need to restore that at this point. One change that I do want to make from this document here is in the town meeting elections department, Department 162. I want to add $11,000 in for the special town meeting, the cost of conducting the special town meeting, and $5,000 for all the additional mailings to mail all the ballots, which was sort of unanticipated in the town clerk's office, and that's required by the state. So that's, it's, I'm putting it in a restoration column, although it wasn't anything that was cut. It's just an additional expense that we have. Some of the other ones that we would not restore would include, I'm looking, I guess, one item that I'm, I'm similar to that clerical position in the council on aging would be the receptionist position that were, did not refill with attrition after the person retired. Given the situation at the senior center and the likelihood of the volume being anywhere where where it would necessitate it, we probably won't need it in FY21. But that's still being evaluated, so that's something under consideration. On that same page, right above the council on aging, is the public health nurse. That's Department 522. This is in the document that you're looking at now. We are looking to increase that above and beyond what we appropriated. So it's not restoring a cut, but actually spending more because once we lost the visiting nurse association, we are without that service. And in the middle of the pandemic, I can't stress enough how critical it is. So I think it's critical that we increase that by $20,000 to get either a company or a person in that can help do all the work that public health nurses do with pandemics and communicable- Um, with pandemics and communicable disease tracing um and all of that. So, so that's an important one. And uh, lastly, the very, very last department seven fifty two, which is all our interest payments and, and debt. Um, we're going to be okay with what we appropriated. We don't need to restore. We don't need to restore those funds. Um, so I, I hope that wasn't too confusing the way I went over it. Again, the bottom line is um, instead of this two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars in restorations. It would be three hundred and thirty two thousand. Um, at your next meeting, I can show you, you know, this sheet that'll total that number. Um, as well as this updated sheet that'll have everything that I just um, just described. Which will really be again, restoring most items except for the ones that I just, that I just went over. And also, I, you know, not going to be recommending um spending uh the savings that we have from the regional dispatch grant yet. I want to wait, see how the revenue shake out and um, see what, see what our needs might happen between now and the annual and special in May. Um, the finance committee meeting that was originally scheduled for tomorrow night is actually delayed that instead of being on November, excuse me. Instead of being September sixteenth, that's going to be on September twenty third. So I have a week where I'm going to update these documents as I just described it to you. And we'll uh present that to the uh finance committee on the twenty third. So I hope that wasn't too confusing. I hope that's helpful. I'm happy to answer any, any questions and Biz is here with me. We've been working on this, you know, hard. And if there's technical things I can't answer, I'm sure she could.
Okay, thank you Doug. I'll uh, I'll open it up to the board, Ms. Nyman.
Um, I don't have any questions, but I think what you presented us tonight makes sense, all your recommendations. I want to thank you, Biz, and the entire financial team for all the hard work you put in every day and keeping us up to date on this ever so changing situation. So thank you for that.
Take care, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, yeah, I got to thank you guys too. But what's the, what's the long range plan for the stabilization fund?
Yeah, so that, that's a good question. So I, I guess I have kind of two answers there. So in, in what I've presented to you, I'm not, I don't have included. Um, replenishing what we took out of stabilization. So that's a good question and something we can certainly talk about. Obviously, to do that, I'm going to have to take it, you know, from somewhere. You know, that's certainly something maybe as we get to May. You know, and we're looking okay, when we'll have, if all else being equal, we should have three hundred nine thousand in savings associated with that regional dispatch grant. So maybe something could happen there. Um, that's certainly a fair question. We are working. Biz has done a good job. Uh, bringing the DOR on board and we're going to be um, working with the DOR and the finance committee to be developing more formal financial policies. So that's, that'll be a, a great point. You know, what's, what's the town's policy going to be when we take it out? Is there an expectation that it gets returned immediately or within a certain number of years? That's all certainly up for discussion. But I don't know, Biz, unless you have a different thought, I guess I, I would think kind of wait until May. What, what's your feeling?
Um, my thought is we would need to wait till May because at this point in time, our free cash won't be certified prior to the meeting. And typically you'd take it from your free cash to reinstate that funding back into the stabilization and the OPEB trust. So I would also anticipate May unless um something speedy happens. But that's my, my thought.
Well, I, I, thank you for giving me the information. I just, we're, we're in new territory here, quite frankly. We've never really done it before. And, and um, so it's all, you know, we want to make sure that we don't lose any of our bond ratings and all that other stuff. That goes along with having a good financial uh base, if you will. So um, it's a luxury we've never had. I've been around a long time and, and this is all relatively new even to me. So um, it's a good thing to have and I just want to make sure that uh we keep the good thing we have going.
No, it's a great point, Larry. And, and in my entire local government career, I've never taken a penny out of stabilization until this year. So I'm right there with you. But just to reassure you a little bit, when we had our bond rating with Standard and Poor's recently, you know, they understood our need to take the funds out of stabilization. So our, when we maintain that double A stable, that was with the full knowledge by the rating agency that we did take it out. But the, one of the main reasons why we pushed so aggressively to bring in the DOR to help us develop financial policies was because. That was one of the rating agencies uh recommendations was, yeah, we understand why you need to do it, but you should really have policies in place. And so that's exactly what we're going to be doing.
Very good. Excellent answers, Doug. Thank you so much.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, no, I just want to say again, thank you. I, uh, you know, I agree wholeheartedly with, oh, you know, the approach here. Um, oh, you know, one of the questions I had was about, you know, local revenues, like and how they were trending. Uh, uh, oh, you know, but Doug answered that in his presentation. Um, I do like how we're holding on, uh, you know, to the three hundred and ninety thousand until we. Oh, you know, I mean, we're only really what, two and a half months into the fiscal year. I mean, we don't actually have a four, three months of receipts yet. Um, in terms of our local receipts. So the, oh, you know, oh, you know, to fund what we have to fund, but to take a cautious approach. Uh, I can see how our locals receive, how our local receipts really pan out uh and trend out over the next few months is going to be uh like really huge. And oh, you know, uh, and you guys are already looking at that and anticipating, uh, you know, how that, oh, you know, could look. So I, I agree wholeheartedly with the approach here and I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Penny.
Thank you. Um, no, I, I, I continue to uh, to like the, the fiscally conservative approach that we're taking during this uh, during this pandemic. You know, it's, it's turning out to um, kind of show that it was the right approach, you know, as, as we do this. Uh, and I, I think continuing uh down this path for the rest of this year is the right way to go. Uh, and Doug, as, as you mentioned and, and Biz you as well, um, we'll have an opportunity come May to uh. To have a clearer picture and make more educated decisions at that point. Uh, but I think the way that we're going uh is, is definitely the way to go. And we've already seen in a short period of time. By taking the approach that we have, we've already seen a little bit of a benefit of it. So, you know, my hats off, continue uh. Going the, the road that you are and I think it's going to keep the town in the best financial position that it can be considering the uh, the economic climate that we're in.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, yeah, I'd echo the same statements by the rest of the board. Uh, the budget presentation made sense. I, I would say. That the stabilization uh fund is something that I think as a town, uh, we, we're very proud of. And, and it, it came in handy when we needed it and then that's what it was designed to do. But I, I definitely think uh. Obviously, you know, no sooner than May, but I definitely think we try to make that a commitment uh to, to pay back stabilization as well as OPEB. Uh, because those are two important things that put us in a great position as a town. Uh, and, and I know that the finance committee uh holds those two uh areas very. Very close to their, their vest on that. Uh, they, they really, they're really passionate about funding those, those two areas. And I know uh, coming from finance, it was always a proud moment at town meeting when you were able to announce the amount of money that you were able to put in to stabilization. Uh, and, and put the town in, in a bad position. And you know, I, I think, you know, Rich, Rich and I were on the board together years ago. And, and I remember when we first started kicking around the idea of a stabilization fund. And we always talked about, you know, it's rainy day fund, you know, we'll never need it, we'll probably never need it, but it's nice to have because it helps our bond ratings. Well. We needed it, you know, and, and I mean, it's like you said, Doug, you've never had to borrow from it. None of us have ever borrowed from it. This really is uncharted territory, but I, I think we continue to go forward with the similar commitment that we've always had. Uh, and the obligation to continue to fund uh stabilization and OPEB trust. But with that, otherwise, you know, great job in the presentation and, and the budget. And you know, all this could change hopefully tomorrow for, for the positive even more. So uh, fingers crossed.
No, that's great. I, I appreciate that. Yeah. And I, I can't, can't thank all of you and anyone else that had anything to do with building up the stabilization over the years. Because uh, we, it would have been in a tough spot right now if we didn't have it, for sure. Um, one, one item that I inadvertently neglected that I just did want to highlight publicly is. One of the areas that I included on the um restorations um is actually restoring a little bit more than we caught is the regulatory secretary position. That I mentioned earlier, that's something that would help coordinate um planning board, zoning board, conservation um related issues. And I, um, the reason why I think we need to up that even a little bit more is we're just not getting um a good um response. Um, from that that we've placed for this part-time position. And just to give practical examples, you know, there's a lot of things. Projects that are pending out there that I know the public is really interested in and the butters sometimes have concerns about, whether it's Lydia Square, Shingle Mill. Things other known as, you know, Zero Pond Street behind Home Depot. We're talking about development, AW Perry, all these big developments that happen. People want information, you know, and it's hard when there's no staff that um is directly, you know. The board members that volunteer and, and serve those boards at night do a great job, but to have somebody that can actually give good customer service and. Respond to questions and provide documents and things that will really be critical. We got a lot going on in town and, and it's an important position. So you will see that that restoration is even a little bit more than what we cut, but I, for small money, I think it'll reap big rewards. So I just wanted to highlight that. And that's all I had on the, on the budget unless you had any other questions.
Okay, uh, other old business, not reasonably anticipated?
I have none.
Okay. Number six, town administrators, report and correspondence, Doug.
Thank you. So um, couple of items. One is uh on COVID. I'm going to share my screen really quick. Uh, hopefully you can all see this map. So this is the uh, the latest map from the state. Rockland is right here where I'm um, drawing my arrow. So gray is the best and then comes green, then yellow, and then red is the worst. So we've gone from uh gray to green to yellow. And uh, what I'm being told is when this gets updated tomorrow, we'll most likely be um in the red. So uh, the numbers, I believe are current numbers. We have eighteen cases in town. Uh, none of which are in our nurse, are in our nursing homes. We have eighteen community cases. Uh, the fire department tells me they are responding to a lot more COVID calls. Um, and like I said, you know, we'll, we'll likely be um in the red soon. Um, one thing that's, that's tough that we're dealing with is with the, the change to how the schools are operating. And maybe before I even get to that change, I just, I really do want to thank Dr. Cron and Jane Hackett and everyone else at the school department. Because you know, when you see in the news what's happening in some other communities like the town of Sharon and some other places where there's. Um, a lot of conflict with the teachers' union and there's not a lot of buy-in with the school committee and school department's plans. Uh, the Rockland School Department did a fantastic job of getting buy-in and including everyone from the beginning and I think they're off to a really good start. Um, but one of the implications of, of this hybrid learning model is when kids are not in school and learning remotely. Um, the state is finding that there's all kinds of new learning situations, environments that are popping up. Some could be just organic with, you know, some parents with lots of kids, neighbors, or they could be actual businesses. Where, you know, you pay an hourly rate so your child can go to a safe place and remotely learn while both parents are working. So as a result of that, uh, the state is um essentially put off, put all the inspections, monitoring, enforcement, all that stuff on the town halls. Basically saying, you got to make sure you certify all these places and inspect them, recertify it. So it's, it's uh, it's going to be very difficult. So we had a um, a meeting recently uh that Jen helped um coordinate and facilitate. And we included all the appropriate departments, police and fire, health, the building department. And we obviously included the school department too, even though this is not their responsibility. It's our responsibility, but it's related to them because it's their students. And, and there's even teacher ratios and things that we have to deal with. Um, so this is just a tough one. I'm just kind of letting you know that. You know, we, we've been informed that there is one that has requested our certification and it has to be provided to the state. So we're going to figure out, you know, how to do this. You know, every town is, is struggling with it, but we're going to do our best. And you know, I think the intent is just to make sure if kids are in some place together, that it's a safe environment, that the people are quarried and soared. And they have smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and all those things. That's a safe environment, but it's, it's just something new.
Doug, who makes that request?
Um, I think Jen is on the line. I, I feel like it was, which agency was it, Jen? Was it DPH or was it a different executive office? Do you remember?
That um, that made the request of the municipality?
Yeah, the requirement that we do the certifications for the remote.
I mean, specifically, like, how do you know specifically where you need to go to inspect?
Right. So it would be the, the entity that has the remote learning program that would need to request their, their letter of certification from the municipality. But with, that's part of the, the problem. So we've asked the schools if they become aware of these groups to inform us. Um, and we'll post information on the website so that, you know, we'll do our part in putting the information out there to make sure that the. Um, the groups doing the remote learning are aware of the requirement. Beyond that, you know, I don't know.
It's, Mike, to answer your question, it's the State Department of Early Education and Care. That's who's requiring that we do. And that's what the certifications go.
So they're requiring, you said that there's, there's businesses out there that are having, having, you know, essentially running remote learning schools?
Well, I mean, it's sort of, you know, the, the school department is, is running a program with, you know, at the McKinley School. So it's sort of like that. But I, you know, I, I know there's one that, and I don't know if it's an existing business. Jen, I think knows more. Are there new? Is it a new organization, Jen, or a new group?
They, they have children's programs now. Um, the requirement is really so EC certified, you could be E-certified um program. And if so, and you want to have a remote learning program, you're exempt, you're, you receive a waiver. If you're a program or a group of parents that want to do this remote learning, a kind of they've been referred to as pods. And I might want to be careful using that uh because that's not what they're being referred to. Um, that you need an exemption. And the exemption is that the town, the municipality is signing off saying, yes, this is a safe space. You're, you're abiding by the required ratios, student-teacher ratios.
Wow.
Yeah, it's really, it's really tough. I mean, you know, I don't think we're going to be out on the prowl, you know, driving around the streets, knocking on doors. I mean, it's really more when, when we get approached or if the school or someone notifies us that they're aware of this, then it's our obligation, you know, to, to follow up and, and deal with it. But it's, it's just hard, you know.
Just, it's just one more reaction by the state that is asking to uh, to regulate with nothing behind it. No direction and basically unenforceable, but they want to keep, they, I think to make themselves feel better, they put the burden on the town. But at the end of the day, this, this again is one more regulation that's unenforceable. You know, because there's no way to find out who is and who isn't doing this. It's just crazy.
Are, are we expecting to, to have residents calling up and, and now telling you guys, you guys got to check this place out because there's multiple kids from different.
Oh, well, wait, wait for the first call for someone to call in and, and, oh yeah, I saw three kids going in there for school. Oh yeah, it's going to happen.
Mike, if I could just admit, just a note on that point and to Rich's point. And believe me, we agree, it's one more, it's like an unfunded mandate, right? Um, and this requirement doesn't come with staff for us to do it. However, on the flip side, if there is an entity that should not have children in there, on their premises. Um, it's, it's a step that's being taken to make sure that those kids are in a safe environment. And so I, I suppose for that reason, that's the silver lining to it.
And Jen, not, not to, not to go way deep into this, but if a group of five parents that are all working decided, hey, you know what? We're going to have our neighbors' kids over and they're going to be able to remote learn from, from our house. Um, while there happens to be a parent there. I, I mean, what they're asking, what the state is asking is again, crazy. I mean, where's regulation that keeps you from having, and, and what's the difference between having four kids come over to, to have a playdate with your kid? Versus remote, remote learning. So it's a slippery slope that at the end of the day, again, this, I could keep going on it. It won't be good for anyone.
And you're fortunate.
And you have.
We hear you, Rich, you know, and, you know, it's, it's, to me, it almost seems almost analogous to like kind of daycare stuff where there's, I think. You know, I know for a fact, lots of people, lots of neighbors watch each other's kids to help them out and stuff. And then at, at some point, something gets considered like a daycare and then they have to be inspected and there's that spectrum. And yeah, there's going to be like some gray areas here and it's, it's hard, you know, this is going to be a hard one. But I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it. Um, Jen has taken the lead just to kind of coordinate all the different people that need to be involved in it. And uh, you know, we're, we're going to do our best. Hopefully there won't be too many that we have to deal with.
Good luck with that.
Any problems.
Thank you for one more added responsibility to your jobs that shouldn't be, but thank you.
Yeah, I hear you.
Hey, that's it.
Um, two other uh quick ones. One is uh with our charter uh update that's pending at the state legislature. One is with our charter update that's pending at the state legislature. I just heard from Senator Keenan's office that the bill was given a favorable recommendation from the Committee on Municipalities last Friday. And per their standard procedure, it's going to move on to their next committee for additional, additional review this week. So the charter is really making good, good speed with the updates that we sent up there. And then the, the last update I had is I wanted to send kind of a public congratulations to Megan Fontaine, who is a really excellent worker we have in our accounting department. This past Saturday, the 12th, she ran and completed a virtual Boston Marathon where she ran on the Town Rail Trail. And she was with her father, her father, Vinnie, our veterans agent, ran half of it, which is also impressive. But what's really, I think, the most notable about what Megan did was she ran the entire marathon and the whole time was carrying a 20-pound rucksack on her back because she ran for the Tough Ruck Group, which is a group of military and citizens whose sole purpose is to ruck in honor and memory of our fallen service members, police, firefighters, and EMTs while raising funds to support military families in need. So I can say, you know, without a doubt that everybody here in town hall was just really proud of her and respects what she did. And I wanted to give her credit for that publicly. And that's all I have tonight.
That's awesome. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board and selectmen and the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
Well, well, beginning with me, I wasn't ready for that. But I just wanted to thank you actually, Mr. Chairman. A week and a half ago, I like our board, a week ago on, on Saturday, like we showed our appreciation, you know, to our local, oh, you know, to our local police department. And, oh, you know, I, I've been on this board for I think four and a half years now. And it was actually probably, like probably the most meaningful day. Oh, you know, other than all joining all of you every other week, which is also fun. Oh, you know, however, like it was really one of the most meaningful days. I've had him as a member of the board. Oh, you know, like, like over the last, over the last few months, we have seen, oh, you know, like a lot of crazy things happening in the country. And, oh, you know, oh, you know, like in bad things and very, oh, you know, like in very just, ah, crazy things that we, oh, you know, that it's really hard to even, oh, you try to believe is even like reality. But here in Rockland, like we know what we have in our police. And we know what we have in our public safety. And how anyone frankly expects that, oh, you know, we're going to turn our back on, oh, oh, you know, on our police, oh, you know, like not support them. Oh, oh, you, oh, you know, during a time in their profession where they do need support. You know, is honestly, oh, you know, is, oh, it's honestly pretty crazy to me. Like we have an amazing, like we have amazing, we have amazing leadership at our police department. Like we have incredible, we have incredible officers and command staff. And, you know, to join with them and with all of you, oh, you know, a week and a half ago was just really meaningful. You could tell, oh, you know, you could tell, oh, you know, the stress like in the toll that, oh, you know, these last few months have had, oh, you know, on the entire department and how appreciative, oh, they were. Oh, you know, really that we were out there and that we support them. I can, for that, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Chair. You really spearhead of the effort. And it was, you know, something that, oh, you know, like, I think went a really, like a really, really long way. So I want to thank you. And then the other thing, after six months, I really got to get better at this Zoom thing because I'm looking at myself and I am like way zoomed in right now and it is really obnoxious. So with that, I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mike, Mike, I actually agree with both points of your side. Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Mike, I also agree with both your points. My, my comment was, was going to be the same as Mr. Mullins. So on September 5th, it was, it was the proudest I've been since sitting on this board. And I can tell you, since I've been elected on this board, there have been quite a few proud moments. The job that, that Chair, Chairman Olafland did to pull this together, recognize the Rockland Police, to Mr. Mullins' point, you know, we have seen so many things that have happened in this country over the last six plus months. And when you, when you look at the news, you, you see, you know, Portland and Seattle and, you know, all these different areas, you know, what you don't see is Rockland. Because we do have a group of police offices that are of the utmost professionalism. This is the group that actually reached out and worked with Black Lives Matters when they wanted to come and protest. And again, when, when you were seeing what was happening in other communities when, when the protest happened, we didn't have that in Rockland. You know, it was a two-hour demonstration protest that I have to hand it to the protesters, did a phenomenal job, but it was because of our police department that it actually went off the way it did. So, you know, for me, it was, it was very, very proud moment. I got to talk to every single police officer, I think. And they really, it, it, I think it really touched them that, that the town did recognize them. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Olafland, for pulling this together. And also looking forward to doing this in October with our firefighters as well.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Ryan?
Well, I was going to mention the firefighters also, but it was a really good thing because the firefighters are going to be before our next meeting anyway. So that we won't be able to advertise it. And we really don't want to advertise so a big crowd comes. We had a very simple ceremony down at the police station. You know, we took pictures that we were together for 30 seconds and took our masks off, had a picture, put them back on and all that other stuff. You know, you always hear sort of comments, but it was a great thing that we did. The police department in the town of Rockland deserves it, as does the fire department. We have one of the best fire rescue teams around anywhere. And our guys are always relied on and all well-respected throughout their fields. And that's both the police and the fire. And, you know, so we can thank ourselves as a town for hiring the right people and, and allowing them to grow the way they should have grown. I can't say enough about them, quite frankly. And, and I've been around the longest, I guess, so I've seen the growth in both the departments over the years. And, and they've turned into quite very well organized, very well-run, very well respected departments, both of them. And, and they should and deserve recognition. And we're going to make it every year and that's a great thing too. And I thank the chairman for his leadership and bringing this to us and the rest of the board because we know what side of the bread the butter goes on. And we take care of that. Thanks to the police. Thanks, Chiefs. Both Chiefs do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ms. Nyman?
Well, I think my colleagues have summed it up perfectly. I also wanted to make mention about last Saturday, Rockland Police Appreciation Day. I want to thank the chairman for bringing this idea to fruition. A few colleagues in the surrounding towns have actually reached out to me and loved the idea. And they may copy us, which is great. I think we really took the lead on this. And hopefully other towns step up and appreciate their police departments that do so much day in and day out. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board for supporting this. It's a great, great thing in the town of Rockland. I also want to wish all the students in Rockland a happy and healthy school year. So hopefully they'll be back in school soon.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, so to echo everything that you guys have all said, you know, first of all, you know, thank you. It's, it's not needed, but it is appreciated. To give credit where credit's due, Rich actually brought the idea to me. And, you know, I called each one of you guys and you guys didn't hesitate. You guys jumped right on board and, and we just made it happen. And I thought it was important, you know, and it was kind of a last minute thing where I thought it was important that each one of you guys speak. So that, that it wasn't just me up there talking, it wasn't just a couple of us. It was, it was each one of us. And I thought you guys all did an amazing job. I thought the police felt like, like you were genuine in your messages, you know? Some of you guys were very passionate. Larry, I think Larry talked about breaking up a fistfight at one point and back in the seventies, which, which was great, how he jumped to the aid of a police officer and he said, do it again. But it was, it was a great ceremony. And I always find that, I know in, in all of our professions, it's important to be shown appreciation. I think we, we do a really nice job of showing appreciation to Doug and the town hall team. And you offer that appreciation when, when the job is being done the right way. And, you know, it's, it's very disheartening when you're only focusing on the negatives. So when, when we go out of our way to let the officers and let the firefighters know that we appreciate them without, without, without any reason, just, just because we do. Because, because the way they carry themselves, the way that they, they honor our community. I think it's important that we let them know that and not just jump in there, you know, for lip service when they, they, they perform an act of heroism or, or jump in there and, and, you know, question them when, when they make a mistake. But I think everyday appreciation is important. Somebody sent me a message online asking, you know, who I thought I was, telling people when they could appreciate the police. Mike, I'm not, I'm not saying you can't appreciate them every day. You appreciate them every day you want. But, but the first Saturday in September going forward in the town of Rockland will forever be, unless some other board comes along and changes it, which I don't see why they would, will be Rockland Police Appreciation Day. And, and I think it's important, I would love to see some other towns, you know, pick this up and run with it. I also talked to a couple of members of, you know, boards of selectmen in other towns and they were a little bit hesitant just for the fact that they didn't want to be seen as copying us. I said, go ahead, do it. I said, that's, that's, that's a challenge, you know, put, put down the gauntlet. You know, you guys can, can go with it, you know? Let people know how we feel and let them know that we have some, some very qualified and trained officers up here on the South Shore in Massachusetts. And that, you know, if we appreciate them now, you know, it, it really makes the jobs a lot easier. It takes a lot of stress. There was a lot of stress for our officers over the last few months. And you could see it when we were down there talking to them. And then after we, we told them how we felt, just kind of the weight just lifted right off their shoulders. They were very relaxed when we talked to them afterwards and they were all very thankful. So I'm looking forward to October 3rd, where we can celebrate our fire department. And we'll do this every year. And guys, thank you. I appreciate your, your continued support. That was, it was excellent the way you guys didn't hesitate and you guys stepped up and did a terrific job and let all the officers know how you guys really felt. So, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion, one second and a second.
Second.
So all those in favor, Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
And myself. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Doug, Biz, Jen, and all.